Where's your seat Ben?
Mr. Vice President.
Oh, uh, Vince, I meant to ask you, are you doing this or just?
I'm sure.
Okay.
It's just very brief, it's literally basic, it's on the website. Here's our score.
What's that?
You should be. I know it's tricky.
It's embarrassing.
But just don't touch the ball. It's not like he was running full speed.
No. Slide, do something.
And it was a big one.
It's really, uh...
Because it extended the, yeah, bad, he went up walking them, they want, you know, scoring it in.
Are you talking about baseball? Good lord.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind him D H once in a while.
Our baseball head, you know, good.
There's children that would do better than him.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially when you see, um, Tom DMO.
I know.
Like...
Climbing fences.
And, and, and all that stuff.
Yep. Congratulations.
All good? Got that baseball talk out of your system?
Yes.
All right. You all good?
Good evening, I call to order the May thirteenth twenty twenty five meeting of the Metatchen Board of Education. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Aliyevich, notice of the meeting please.
I hereby make this statement to indicate compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, known as chapter two, three, one of the public laws of New Jersey nineteen seventy five, which became effective ninety days after enactment, January nineteenth nineteen seventy six. Notice of this meeting was given by providing the location, time, and date of this meeting, and posting of the same on the front board, door of the Board of Education offices, by delivering copies to the Borough Hall in the Metatchen Public Library, the Home News and Tribune, and by filing a copy with the Borough Clerk as prescribed by this law.
Thank you, roll call please.
Mr. Bott.
Here.
Ms. Cheatham.
Here.
Mr. Dersflinger.
Here.
Mr. Glasberg.
Here.
Dr. Johnson Marcus.
Here.
Ms. Colleen.
Here.
Mr. Lifton.
Here.
Ms. Tresta.
Here.
Dr. Stigner.
Here.
Mr. Soss.
Here.
Thank you so much, Dr. Caputo, we have a showcase of success tonight.
We do, it's always a great way to start a board meeting.
Um, the Metatchen High School Jazz Band, under the direction of Mr. John Flynn, is here tonight.
The group is one of two auditioned jazz bands at the high school and performs regularly for the community and at local jazz festivals and competitions. Tonight, the band will perform Cotton Tail by Duke Ellington, and we invite everybody to please join the jazz band, the rest of the Metatchen Jazz Groups, at their annual Jazz on the Plaza Concert, Wednesday, June eleventh downtown. Mr. Flynn.
That was fantastic. I think we should record them and play them, uh, as we start every news, every meeting. That was spectacular, parents, you should be so proud. I am consistently impressed by the quality of the productions of our, uh, music, uh, departments here. Last night was our Orchestra Edgar concert, tomorrow is band, chorus on Thursday. I'm sorry, I'm stealing all the announcements, but I'm just so excited to be able to come and hear this amazing work.
It's music season.
Thank you.
And they're playing downtown next, uh, next month also.
Yes, July eleventh?
Yeah, June eleventh.
June eleventh, sorry.
Downtown, yep.
It's not July yet, sorry, got ahead of myself. Wonderful, all right, do we give them some time to dig down?
Yeah, sure. Dr. Herzog has to get set up for presentation.
All right, wonderful. And again, we will not cry if you do not stay, we understand you're here to see your superstars, uh, but the meeting is also open to the public if you did want to come and say anything, um, to us while they break down their equipment.
Great job, Mr. Flynn.
If I could make it to their concert.
Sure.
I've been before and it's spectacular. Sorry, I got you up there so early.
It's all good.
All right, welcome, member of the public.
Hi, everyone, so great to see all of you. I think I know most of you, there are some new faces, but it's great to see all of you. Uh, my name is Ben Salaski, I live at seventeen Mark Circle, I know I have to do that now. Most importantly, though, I am a very proud graduate of the Metatchen Public School System. Two years ago, I had the honor and the privilege of serving as the first student board member on this Board of Education, um, and needless to say, that experience changed my life forever, so I'm very grateful for that. Um, I'm here tonight, not with a complaint, or, or quest, or a question, but I'm with, here with gratitude.
Aww.
Um, why? Because while our federal government is looking to threaten our education system, you guys are working to protect it, you guys are doing the really important work that needs to be done. And, I mean, here in Metatchen, we all, I think, as a town and a community, uh, believe that every student deserves a fair shot at success, um, and we're so lucky to just have a Board of Education that believes in that, um, and has never lost sight of that. Uh, the Board continues to govern with integrity, empathy, purpose. You've all helped foster an environment, uh, where people feel heard and students are seen and valued. Two years ago, next Friday, I actually sat right in Presha's chair, um, and that was, I gave a speech, I don't know if anyone remembers that, about a Florida school district that banned Amanda Gorman's The Hill We Climb. Uh, I quoted her that day, so that's, next Friday would have been the day. Um, and I just want to briefly quote her now. Uh, she said, "We lay down our arms so we can reach out our arms to one another. We seek harm to none and harmony for all." That's what this Board's doing, you guys are doing this work, uh, and I just wanted to come up here to say thank you for your leadership, your integrity, for reminding us that public service, when it's done right, still matters. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ben, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service as our inaugural student board member. We appreciated your time here, and we are grateful to see the adventures you've been up to since then, so thank you for that. Oh, thanks so much. All right, wonderful, Dr. Caputo, we have some presentations, uh, Dr. Herzog.
I think that's it for the, uh, public.
Oh, yeah, I gotta close this section.
I think so, just to make sure.
I mean, I shouldn't close it because I see people in the audience. Uh, is there any other members of the public who would like to speak? All right, and seeing none, we're closing that section, I got so excited seeing Ben, I was... All right, um, Dr. Herzog, you've got a presentation for us.
I do, thank you. Well, super proud to follow that testimony and that comment, and proud to be up here representing a district and a board that produces graduates like that, um, with those values, so, thanks for being here, Ben. So this evening, I'm going to do our annual update on our mental health initiative, and, um, provide some information about how it's going, and how our Board of Education and our district are using the funds that the community supported. A little bit, um, of statistics to start us off about youth mental health, and why the Mental Health Initiative in our school district is important. You can see by the two largest bubbles, suicide is the second leading cause of death amongst, um, in youth ages ten to fourteen, and twenty percent of, of United States high school students have had serious thoughts of suicide. We know that mental health is a huge issue nationally, in New Jersey, in our town, it's everywhere, and we also know that early intervention and the right interventions are essential in getting the most positive outcomes for our students, and that's why we're invested in this program. In twenty nineteen, the community, the Board of Education, um, supported, and the community supported a mental health referendum, at the time, it was, um, in the amount of seven hundred thousand. It has gone up incrementally each year as, um, the budget, with the annual increase, but just to recap quickly, there were five components of the mental health referendum at the time, and that's what the funds still go towards. So, we've got two school psychologist positions funded from this, so that, um, there's somebody five days a week in each of our schools as a school psychologist. We've increased our behavioral support, um, by way of board certified behavior analysts, um, and the amount that we have in districts serving our students. We've brought in more therapeutic programs, um, specifically at Campbell and Edgar, with partnerships from community agencies, and we added academic interventions, reading specialist position, a math intervention position, some summer programs, and, um, various little programs, because we do believe that intervention and, and wellness and academic success go hand in hand, and we added some clerical support so that the people who need to do this work are freed up to do so. The goals of our initiative involve prevention, education, and support, and we focus on all three of these areas, early identification, building skill sets, educating and promoting acceptance awareness, and supporting students, staff, family members, et cetera. This, this evening, I'm going to present on twelve essential elements that we've identified are now part of our comprehensive mental health initiative. And I will add that beyond the components that were included and, that are included in the seven hundred thousand dollar referendum, and we also have additional resources that contribute to our comprehensive program. We have additional child, eight other additional child study team members, several school counselors, additional student assistance counselors, partnerships with additional, um, agencies for therapeutic clinicians in our schools, so the referendum only funds part of it, we've added to that. But with all of these resources combined, we summarize twelve elements that we think really, um, describe the commonalities across our mental health program throughout our schools, um, and throughout pre-K through high school. So those are tiered interventions, social emotional learning being embedded in our curriculum, having core character education skills, providing explicit instruction in these areas, opportunities for practice and application, staff development, high quality resources, the support of our leadership, engaging our families and our community, following a model of collaboration like we do for everything else, for, that's multidisciplinary in nature, having opportunities for student leadership, peer mentoring, and now, most recently, added a comprehensive suicide awareness program. So I'm going to give a little bit of background on these components and some examples to demonstrate, um, what we're doing in our schools. So this is just a quick description of what we refer to as tiered interventions, which is a statewide model, we refer to tier one, meaning the curriculum, the general programming that all students get. Tier two, the more tailored programs that some students get because they need additional programs. And tier three are specialized, individualized, data-driven services that the smallest percentage of students get. So this is a model that the district follows, and most districts follow, for academic interventions, but we're also now following this beyond academics, in the area of social emotional learning, mental health, and behavioral health. This is a visual that we put together in two thousand and nineteen and have been updating and adding, that was our vision for our mental health program. This is a visual of the tiers, tier one, the green, is what all students get across, and then tier two, what some students get, and tier three are the most individualized, data-driven programs. So you can see some of the things that are included here, at, in the bottom level, con, um, cell embedded in our curriculum, professional development for all staff, um, offering summer transition programs, having student leaders, advisories, celebrations, character ed programs. As you move up the triangle, you get need-based groups, individual counseling, intervention services, community referrals, and at the top of the triangle are therapeutic programs, our functional-based assessment, our crisis interventions, our family components. So the first component is cell embedded in our curriculum, which is a cornerstone of the curriculum here in Metatchen, it was something that brought me to Metatchen, attracted me to this district eight years ago, and it is work that preceded me, and we should all be really proud of, but we do, um, stay true to our, our values of embedding core in our curriculum. We follow, we align to NJ DOE's framework for this, their research that they posted, CASL, which is the most well-established, um, organization around this work. We write it into curriculums, we've trained our curriculum writers, and there's really three approaches that we take to embedding cell in our curriculum, providing explicit instruction in a target skill, integrating it with academic content, or engaging it, or embedding it in our, in our routines and our daily practices. We also have adopt, have for years had a common framework, that's a social problem solving model, that we apply to academics, to social problem solving, and to, um, work that we even do as a problem solving team of adults. And we sustain this work by embedding these, um, these, uh, skills in our new teacher orientations, our three-year new teacher academies, our in-service days, our department meetings, and all of our professional development. So throughout all of our grades, we, and all of our schools, we are identifying core character ed skills, which we know are related to positive mental health. Students have to know how to problem solve, they have to know how, have coping skills, they have to have awareness and self-management for themselves and others. So we have our core skills, we explicitly instruct in them, and we have frequent opportunities to practice and apply those skills in all of the schools. Um, we have, going back to the core skills, we have the cell competencies that we're all, um, stay focused on. Different schools have, some have identified monthly character traits that they explicitly teach to throughout the month in various ways. Our elementary program has include a month, also included a monthly wellness focus for their morning meeting instruction, as well as a cell skill. And our high school, for example, has a touchstone based on, um, pride, purpose, respect, integrity, diversity, and empathy, so all schools have their core identified skills. They all provide explicit instruction in these skills in many ways, this could be a combination of assemblies, guest speakers, launching whole school awareness, um, events, class meetings, morning meeting in the elementary, advisory lessons in the middle school, daily announcements in the secondary that educate, inspire, challenge students, call them to action. And then there's many opportunities to practice and apply these skills. That we have in the high school, interactive bulletin boards, take one, you know, leave one, practice, take what you need, spreading awareness, challenging students to, um, to use these skills. At the elementary, we have morning meeting, daily activities, we have lunchtime events, uh, for educational awareness, led by our clinicians and our student assistance counselors. We're always working on restorative practices, when somebody might make a poor decision, and how to repair relationships, we're reinforcing these skills through different programs like Paws Up Certificate, or Bright Bulldogs at Edgar, or the Fish and Student of the Month Awards at the high school, and then we're always doing observances, celebrations that are folk, and celebrations that are focused on belonging, inclusion, acceptance, joy, culture, and all of that. So we're teaching these skills in many, many ways and practicing them. The other, the next three components that I'd like to focus on are the staff development that we've been providing, the high quality resources we're utilizing, and the support of our leadership. In terms of staff development, we are now, um, this year, we focused on bringing Lifelines Trilogy into our schools, that's been a very robust professional development program, which I'll talk more about for suicide awareness. Um, we have had sessions for our new teacher academy, we've done a core, we've trained a core team on threat assessment training, our BCBAs are always doing training, and our clinicians are always doing training for staff. In fact, we've had several training, trainings that all staff, for all schools, have received related to mental health this year. And then we incorporate staff wellness activities, um, whenever we can, especially at in-service days. We always use evidence-based, high-quality resources, this, there are a few listed, many from CASL, some endorsed by the NJ DOE, um, Lifelines, Wingman, those, to name a few. And for our leadership support, we now have a mental health leadership team that steers, advises, and collaborates to help guide us moving in, moving forward and continuing to evolve. This year, we've expanded that with, um, with community experts and parent representatives, who are both parent, some parents who are experts, and some who are just stakeholders utilizing these services. We have, um, school and district student support teams, so each school has a support team of counselors, child study team, administrators, who make decisions about their building and their students, and what's needed there, and then we come together as a larger group throughout the year to make other decisions. We are aligning this work with our district goals, um, we're staying aligned to the whole child philosophy, and mental health and wellness and trauma-informed instruction is a district priority, along with staff wellness. We're proud of our partnerships with parents and our community, um, we're proud of our multidisciplinary collaboration, and especially exciting is our student leadership and peer mentoring, which has really evolved over the last few years. Um, for parent and for family and community engagement and partnership, we've have continuous programs for parents, tonight, there was a Having Hope session on, on suicide prevention for any caregivers or interested friends who want to learn more about it. We've had presentations on the impact of so- We've had presentations on the impact of social media and wellness. Our own people have done trainings, Rutgers has done trainings. We're working with the Matatchin Police Department on collaborative trainings whenever there's a mental health issue that involves students that they get involved with. We're working really nicely together, so that's been excellent. And we always collaborate in all of our models. We use a framework for collaboration, and we do that with our mental health work as well. Dr. Caputo has been leading hot topic forums. Mental health is one of the topics for about four years that we engage different participants with varied expertise, and we engage in problem solving, and that leads to specific goal-setting and action planning that we implement in our district. Our partnerships with our mental health agencies have contributed to generating lots of great ideas and great content and great PD. Our own staff members, our student assistance counselor, child study team, our clinicians co-plan a lot of the lessons that I talked about during, for the explicit instruction. And we take this multi-collaborative approach to our intervention teams who are often dealing with issues related to mental health, anxiety, depression, wellness, and all of that. In terms of our student leadership and peer mentorship, Bulldog Buddies is a new program in our elementary, which partners first graders and third graders, second graders and fourth graders to work on the monthly theme and practice some of the activities together, and students mentor students and build relationships around social-emotional learning and wellness themes. The middle school has now, now has mental health ambassadors that are training under our clinicians and our student assistance counselors to spread awareness, to help friends, to help identify needs, and make sure students know who to go to for help and when. That's been wonderful. In fact, they're attending, you'll be approving a conference, students are attending in the high school also to be little ambassadors and go learn more. Our Wingman program has been here for several years. We have a unified program that involves mentorship, many advisory boards. In the last two years, part of our district goals has been leveraging our co-curricular clubs, our athletes, our coaches, to have some student-led programs that really support kindness, empathy, and inclusivity. As I mentioned, we implemented Lifelines Trilogy this year. That was a very comprehensive program that was implemented throughout the year. We had a core team trained in three aspects: prevention programming, intervention programming, and postvention, which is following, which is our response following a crisis. Our PE, our secondary health and PE teachers were trained in the curriculum component, and they implemented, they launched it for the second half of the year. They implemented these lessons in health class for sixth grade, ninth grade, and 11th grade. So students are now learning in their health programs how to identify warning signs, what, who is a trusted adult, how to, how and when to seek support for yourself or a friend, and specific problem-solving skills. Part of this program is identifying trusted adults. Our secondary schools had a trusted adult campaign where teachers identified themselves, talked to kids about what that means, clinicians and specialists talked to teachers about being a trusted adult for students. And all staff was trained on the warning signs and strategies to support students, how to lead a student with a warm handoff to another adult who's more of a specialist. We offered parent training on the lifelines, we had the program tonight, and we've also been working on our traumatic event plan to make sure that it is best aligned with these, is aligned well with these best practices. And we launched a memorialization committee to continue to make sure we're doing the recommended practices. So a few annual highlights of the mental health initiative for this year is that we added to our mental health leadership team with community experts and parent representatives. The lifelines work has been tremendous, and we're really empowering students to identify warning signs, seek assistance for themselves and their peers. We've done, we brought in a consultant to do targeted professional development for our teams that serve on the Intervention and Referral Services Committee, our 504 teams, our child study teams, and they sat through training on tiered interventions beyond academics. So how to take interventions and strengthen our tier one core program, our tier two program for some, and our tier three program for, for some students as well. And that is following the New Jersey Tiered System of Support Framework, which we'll be focusing more on next year as well. We've been doing training at all the schools. We got all this instructional staff trained again on mental health strategies and practices. That is great, increasing awareness throughout. And the actionable items that have come from the forums with the superintendent have been exciting and have helped us implement our district goals, and the support of our athletes and our extracurricular students and their coaches and advisor, advisors have been wonderful as well. Looking ahead, we'll be focusing on continuity and sustainability of all of our programs and services. Where one big item on our list is planning for the realignment and what our mental health services look like, and how these supports evolve further when our schools are reconfigured. And one thing that has been identified throughout the year that we put on our list for next year is getting more strategies out to support students in navigating sensitive topics in their classes and in the content, especially based on their prior experiences. We'll continue implementing the New Jersey Tiered System of Support Framework beyond academics, and always focusing on fostering kindness, empathy, coping skills, and problem-solving skills. So thank you to all of you for your support, the community for its continued support, and all the people who are involved in the daily implementation of this work. And a special thanks to Dr. Danine Bonacisa, our Director of Special Services, who has been a partner with me in these presentations, she's here this evening, and Alana Curtin, our Supervisor of School Counseling, and Heather Mills, her interim replacement. We all work together very closely with our mental health partners, our school administrators, to make sure this work is rolled out, and our child study teams, our counselors, and our clinicians. So we certainly now have a lot of expertise in-house, and this work has really permeated our programs.
Thank you so much, Dr. Herzog, for reminding us all, as Ben kind of alluded to earlier, about how excellent our district is in having this foresight and planning to ensure that we support our students across the board. So thank you for that. Are there any questions for Dr. Herzog, Mr. Glassberg?
Just, just some comments mainly.
Of course.
So thank you for all this level of detail. I was going to make a joke about wishing that you went a little bit deeper, but you went plenty deep, and I appreciate it. So, you know, we sat here on the cusp of, on the cusp of COVID, not knowing that, with you and the team and the board advocating for this with the public. And I remember sitting out here with former President Justin Manley at a public information session where some people were fully supportive of the need for mental health supports in schools, adding to them. Other people, open-minded, but not so sure about whether or not this is the role of schools. And we're so thankful for the support of the public, but we're equally as thankful that this was not just money thrown at a problem, a problem that we didn't even know the scope of. This was more than money, and your presentation shows that it's really a lot of work. So it's, it's a good amount of money, but it's a ton of work to make this sustained and worthwhile, because this isn't just hiring a couple of people. This is daily work and a ton of hours that go, that go into this. So the public was voting on the money, but they got the money, and they got a lot of effort and work and commitment, and refocusing how we approach things, and a really comprehensive plan for working with mental health issues, but also how academics and mental health intertwine, and that was all presented here. So thank you for the, for the hard work, not just for the advocacy, but for the hard work that you did to put all of this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glassberg. I will echo that as well, because it is, as you alluded to, not just you, not just your supervisors, it's every single person within our district is being empowered to support our students across their mental health and well-being. So that is deeply appreciated. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Herzog? I look at you, so I said it right. Herzog. Dr. Spigner.
Yes, just wanted to underscore all of what was said and how important this initiative is across the board, and happy to see all the levels of involvement, including the incorporation into the curriculum, as well as the peer support and the buddies and all of that. I'm sure there's a lot of research behind that, how effective it can be. So I'm, every slide I saw that I wanted to ask a question on, you kind of answered and provided the insight into it. And it's really lovely to see the research, to hear, the undertone of the research that goes into all of the resources and the way you've, you and the team have approached the initiative and the work with, for our students. So thank you and kudos to everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Spigner. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Jiedem.
Yes, I'd like to echo everyone else's, that this is tremendous. So thank you so much to you and all, your team for everything that you do. I just had some questions because I can imagine, as we all know, there's a shortage of mental health providers currently for both children and adults. What are you seeing in the capacity, like with the current school psychologists? Are they fully utilized, or what does that look like?
Yeah, with respect to that shortage, that reminds me, that's why it's so important to have these services in real, authentic settings where the students might have the need on the spot and have access to those services, because those statistics on the first slide, they get better when they have the services early. And so many people don't access the services, so providing them in school is so important. I would say our school psychologists have been critical in influencing the culture of this work permeating throughout, in trainings, in consulting, in supporting. So they do do some direct service work. They have some students they counsel, they have students they write behavior plans for, they do risk assessments, they, all of our teams now are trained in risk assessments, they write safety plans, they provide recommendations and referrals. So they do a ton of this work, but also I would say they're pivotal in building capacity of others to have bigger toolkits, because now, as you mentioned, this is the work everybody's doing. Our classroom teachers are doing this, our paraprofessionals are doing this work. We're, we're demystifying it, and now it's the work that everybody does every day.
Thank you. And then when you talk about community referrals, can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. So there are some times that students need additional level of services that we can't provide at a school. So we might make referrals to partial care programs, sometimes hospitalization. We have students who utilize those services. Our Rutgers clinicians have a direct connection with the Rutgers services at those levels. It could be just providing resources. There's the NJ4S resources now that we're starting to bring in for our middle school, and we could explore for our high school in the future, provide more groups in, on site by, by other county community resources. So just making, sending out resources when a student has a need, here are groups in the area for anxiety, for depression, here are other resources.
Wonderful. Thank you. That's terrific, because we know sometimes people don't know where to go, so it's wonderful having that warm transfer.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jiedem. Any other questions, comments? Apparently, the gallery outside has some comments. All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Herzog.
All right. Dr. Caputo, you have something.
I do. I have a short report. As required by the Department of Education, every school in the state has to report out and post the results of the school's self-assessment for determining grades under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. This is a final report of all those interim HIB reports I've given to the board. We, we submit this self-evaluation, the, we send it to the State Department of Education, they review it, much like CUSAC, but this is for HIB, and they confirm or modify our score. So I have our scores. These are posted, Ms. Aliyevich, on our website already. Thank you. The district score, and by the way, this is out of 78. I don't know why it's 78, but our district score is 79. I'm sorry. Our district, district score is 74 out of 78. Each of the schools is self-scores and is checked by the state in nine core elements. At Campbell School, those nine core elements add to 75 out of 78. At Edgar, those nine core elements add to 73 out of 78. At the high school, the nine core elements add to 74 out of 78. And at Moss School, the nine elements add to 72 out of 78. That's where our district grade of 74 out of 78 comes in. This is the, that report that I give, it's on the agenda, and Mrs. Aliyevich has posted it, in case anyone wants to see the scores in those nine elements for each of the schools.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Caputo. All right. Now we are moving to, any questions about that before I move to the next section? All right. Wonderful. We moved to the president's report. I have none today. Superintendent?
No report.
Was that all for you?
That's it.
All right. And I don't believe any of our committees have met since the last board meeting, however, if there are any updates anyone wants to share, or just perhaps share the next meeting date. I know you enjoy doing so, Ms. Glassberg.
Well, enjoy. I don't, but just to make sure everybody stays informed, in case you didn't hear the previous meetings, school is going to start on time next year. There's nothing that's getting in the way of that. We're on track for air conditioning at all or most of the schools right around the beginning part of the year. It continues to be in flux, but things are looking pretty good overall there. Construction is really continued in a very positive way. If you drive by Moss or here at the, here at the high school, at the high school, now the foundation floor's in there at the, for the new gym in that classroom wing. A lot of steel has been erected, so it's been very positive overall at all of the locations. The Board of Ed Office has moved, in case you're looking to come see Dr. Caputo for any reason. He's over here at the, at the high school. You'll see some signage out front that would...
Nice signs, courtesy of Mr. Prowski.
Oh, perfect, from Mr. Prowski, indicating where to go. So they're working out of the extended cafeteria. Some things are progressing well. Our next meeting is on Monday. That one is a regular committee meeting. The next open public committee meeting is on June 16th at Nats, at 7:00 PM in the Matatchin High School Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glassberg. And I also want to say that I have, as I have driven around to some of the schools, I'm very impressed at the progress, and I am grateful to our community for your patience and your grace as we have gone through these transitions. We are almost there. Knock on whatever material this is, but things are coming along nicely, and thank you all for your patience and your grace around that. Any other committee chairs would like to share anything of import? All right. Fantastic. Ms. Restha.
Hi, guys. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. I know it's, it's been a very busy month for all schools, but I would like to start with the elementary school. I know that we talked a lot about the special person tea coming up, but it happened. I went, it was like a truly heartwarming event, like just seeing all the kids with like their special person, whether it was like their uncle or like their cousin. Like I saw this kid bring in like their piano teacher, and I was like, that was like the sweetest thing I've ever seen. Like it was, it was like amazing. And I think at the elementary school, the kids were also making things for Mother's Day, and I always think that's great. I hope everyone who's a mother had a great Mother's Day. It's amazing. And at the middle school, I think we talked about it, they had their orchestra performance too, and I heard it went really well. So it's amazing. And they have their eighth grade dance coming up, and it's going to be really fun. And also talking about dances at the high school, we have prom next Friday, very exciting. Hopefully, it won't rain. The weather has been very muggy recently. And then after that, the AP exam was hybrid this year, and I think like it, I was, I think a lot of us were like, oh, like would it be harder and stuff for like, especially topics like math, because it's like, it'd be helpful, it's like, right? But it really wasn't that bad, and I think like a lot of us actually liked it more too. So I mean, it's a really good upgrade on that. And other than that, those are all the things I was writing now, but yeah, thank you for listening.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Restha.
And, and Prisha, I was looking through the printed version of the Bulldog Bark. It lists a lot of future plans for seniors, and I see that it lists you planning to go to Rutgers in the fall.
Yes.
And as a two-time graduate, his son went there, and his daughter's going there for graduate school. I'm proud of everybody on here, but certainly congratulations on your decision.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes, congratulations. Wonderful. Any questions or comments? All right. Wonderful. Is there any old business from the board? Okay. Is there any new business from the board? Turn the mic on.
I just wanted to mention, I'm sure everybody has seen this, but I noticed a couple of postings on some social media sites. One of our former students that was part of our 18 to 21-year-old program has been hired by Manasquan Bank now. And I just, we talk so much about collaboration and community partnerships, and it's a really heartwarming example of how our school is working with community businesses to create opportunities for our students after they leave our walls. And so I'm just so proud of the work that you guys are doing here in that department to create those partnerships, and very thankful to Manasquan Bank for providing the opportunity for our students to... to really flourish once they leave our buildings. So thank you so much for everybody that was involved in that.
Ms. Colleen, it was so nice that you shared that with us. I immediately shared it with Dr. Bonacissa, who, that was her program coming here. We're so proud of the work that she's continued to do with the staff she's brought in. And it's great to see our kids doing great, especially when it's in our own community. So thanks, Doc.
Thank you so much, Ms. Colleen, for bringing that up. That's wonderful.
Well, thank you, guys. Thank you, Manasquan Bank. Thank you all.
Yes. Thank you to our community partner. That's awesome. All right. Any other new business? All right. Good people. At this time, I'd like to move to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meetings from April 29th, 2025. Special Business Meeting 1, Special Business Meeting 2, as well as the board meeting. Do I have a second? Mr. Bott? Any questions concerned? All right. Rule call, please. Ms. Aliyevich?
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Chitam?
Yes.
Mr. Dersflinger?
I abstain.
Thank you. Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
I abstain.
Thank you. Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, the meeting is open to the public for any topic. Seeing none, I close this section of the meeting. All right. Now we move to the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. Oftentimes, it may appear to members of our audience that the Board of Education takes action with very little comment. In many cases, a unanimous vote. Before a matter is placed on the agenda at a public meeting, the administration has thoroughly reviewed the matter with the Superintendent of Schools. If the Superintendent is satisfied that the matter is ready to be presented to the Board of Education, it is then referred to the appropriate board committee. The members of the board committee work with the administration and the Superintendent to assure that the members fully understand the matter. When the committee is satisfied with the matter, it is presented to the Board of Education for discussion before any final action is taken. Only then is it placed on the agenda for action at a public meeting. At this time, I'd like to move items A1 through 6, personnel items A1 through 6. May I have a second, please? Mr. Dersflinger? Are there any questions or comments about these personnel items? Mr. Suss?
Just a question to educate myself. What is the limit for the number of days you need to have a substitute that we have to approve a leave replacement? So like 30 days?
Twenty.
So we can have the, subs can do 20 days in any classroom consecutively. If it's going to be on 20, we need to get permission from the county superintendent, which we do from time to time. And that's usually for another 20 days. Anything beyond the initial 20 days without approval is considered a leave replacement position. So sometimes we have teachers that may spend the entire year, August through June, in a leave replacement position. Sometimes you have teachers that start the year, end the year, or work the months in the middle of the year. And sometimes we even have leave replacement teachers who may go directly from one leave replacement job to another one if the tenure teacher or the employee teacher who's going, they're going out, they may align. So that's, those are the reasons that we ask you to approve them. For a while now, we've appointed our leave replacement teachers at the prorated Step 1 of the salary guard, whether they have an advanced degree or multiple years of teaching. We think that differentiation between the daily subrate and this leave replacement rate is well-earned and well-deserved. This person is the teacher of record. They do parent meetings. They do grading. They do lesson planning. They attend all meetings. And so that's how we differentiate between a daily substitute, who's an at-will employee, and, you know, daily employee, and a leave replacement who's in for a long period of time doing everything that the teacher of record would do. I'm not sure if that's the...
No, that's perfect. And more information than I want, but great. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Suss. Any other questions or comments on the personnel items? All right. Seeing none. Rule call, please. Ms. Aliyevich?
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Chitam?
Yes.
Mr. Dersflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Suss, finance?
I'd like to move items B1 through B14 as listed on the agenda.
All right. Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Glassberg? Any questions or comments on the finance items? Mr. Suss, on the finance items?
Yes. Just want to point out a couple of things. Item 2 is the busing fee for next year. I think I mentioned it from the committee meetings. The warning's a little, it's a little legalese, but it says, move to approve the partial subscription busing fee of $610. It's partial subscription because that's the parent component and the school district subsidizes the rest. So parents won't be hit with another charge. It's only $610 per student per year. And also want to mention that we will be busing to Edgar and Campbell for the next year. The other item I just wanted to point out was item 10, the resolution that is in support of a grant for planting trees. Kudos to the administration. I think we mentioned it before that we hired a grant writer. I actually saw it and I did my usual nagging and they were already on top of it. And this is just to support that if we do get the grant, that we will use it.
Kate Limerick, our secondary STEM teacher, has been all over this. This will have all, her fingerprints all over it. In fact, we had another meeting today. I met with her in the hall. She gives me updates. It was due today. Or, yeah, due today. We submitted that and we're really excited. We applied for a pretty large grant, but we think we have the right components to get that. So we'll certainly keep the community board informed.
But this is great. Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I especially appreciate the clarification with respect to busing so that folks understand the structure of busing in our district. Ms. Colleen?
Thanks. I have a quick question on number 13. One of the change orders here. It's change order 15. And it says there is a modification to the exterior stairs at Campbell School due to a dimensional issue. Is that something that the architect is responsible? Like was it an architect issue that?
So the...
Is it bubbling up here?
Mr. Harvey?
Yeah. It probably is an error, if that's your question.
Actually, the deeper question is if it's the architect's error, should the architect be refunding for the cost of the...
So we're, we are planning to address some of those issues at the project's completion. So there, we want to keep the project moving, but there's different things that go on between the contractors, the architect, and us where there's different points of view on some different things. And the advice is to address them in meetings near the end.
So we'll be getting, so there's potential for us to be getting a refund or like some kind of credit?
There's various potential, yeah. On various different items, where there might not have been clear enough language, where the contractor might have misinterpreted something when they bid on it, how the architect wrote the plans, exactly. So there's a lot of moving parts like that that could work out in the end, that are going to need to be negotiated with the players and with the attorneys.
Okay. So I guess that'll become up as like another construction update? Is that how that comes out or?
In terms of how that will resolve itself? Yeah, that's going to be all the way at the end of the project, though. Now, there's other elements here. You know, sometimes there are things like that that we just have to keep moving. Then there's other things in here that are just actual changes that we decided to do, like adding the bathroom into the cafeteria, you know, into the cafeteria kitchen space, kind of things like that. But something like that and then some of the AV work as well. There's just some question about the clarity of the plans and whether, who's responsible ultimately for that. But the goal is to keep the project moving forward within the contingency monies that we have.
And this is a massive project. So as you can imagine, there's going to be errors. And as Mr. Glassberg said, we don't want to fight now. We want the project to keep moving and then we'll address it at the end of the project. As Mr. Glassberg said.
Thank you.
So we could, I could certainly say, though, that we'll be, there'll be an update on those kinds of things at the appropriate time when we get there. But right now, we're just, we feel like we need to pay for them and move forward with it.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Good question. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the finance items? Seeing none. Rule call, please.
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Chitam?
Yes.
Mr. Dersflinger?
Yes.
Mr. Glassberg?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Colleen?
Yes.
Mr. Lifton?
Yes.
Dr. Spigner?
Yes.
Mr. Suss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Dr. Spigner, policy?
Yes. Move to approve items C1 through 2 on the agenda. Is this item on the agenda?
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Suss? Any questions or comments on the policy items? Seeing none. Rule call, please. Ms. Aliyevich?
Mr. Bott?
Yes.
Ms. Chitam?
Yes.
Mr. Dersflinger?[1580.22]